Sure, it's okay.
Sounds good.
All right. Okay, so as I was mentioning, we're gonna, I want to take an item out of order to do an announcement really quickly and introduce a new member of our executive team to everybody as well. First off, I want to make the announcement that today is Chief Craig's last council meeting with us. As many of you know, he's gonna be moving on to, to lead a different force at a different department. And so I briefly just wanna, wanna read something to you. Chief Craig joined the City of Victoria Police Department on August 5th, 2011, and has served our community for over the past eight years. He has an excellent reputation in the community, having been involved with the Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Club, Victoria College Police Academy, Hope of South Texas, and Midcoast Family Services. He took pride in moving the department toward a community policing concept. With the help, of course, of his department personnel, he developed zone meetings and assisted a department in improving its technological assets. He created an approach utilizing data, which of course, we all like data and taking data-driven approach. He has been instrumental in supporting the department's social media campaign and community outreach efforts to further engage the community. He was also instrumental in establishing the Victoria Police Foundation that sponsors the Victoria Police Youth Explorer Program. This program is for high school students ages 14 to 18 that have an interest in law enforcement. He also supported the first ever Victoria Police Department Summer Youth Camp for younger students. And more recently, of course, he's played an intricate role in our response to COVID-19. And of course, this week, there are other events taking place as well where he's been a leader in our community. And so on behalf of, of our administration, and I'm sure you all might have some words for him as well, we want to wish him well and thank him for his service to our community. We do have a farewell plan for him that I believe you have invitations for that in front of you. And so we'll formally be presenting him with, with some goodies at that time. But for now, this is his last council meeting, and so I do wanna make that statement and actually give him an opportunity to say a few words for those that might be watching at home that may not get an opportunity to be part of his farewell next week.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of city council. I certainly didn't see myself delivering this message tonight or anytime in the future. But it's a little bit of a bittersweet moment for me. And I gotta say that first and foremost, it's been a privilege and honor to lead the men and women of the Victoria Police Department, a very fine police organization, and it's truly been my honor to, to do that. A lot of, you know, what we've accomplished, we've accomplished together. And it's been, you know, their hard work and effort and going out there each and every day serving this community. So again, it's, it's, like I said, it's, it's somewhat bittersweet in, in one sense. But I'm looking forward to the, you know, to my next chapter. But I'm always gonna look back fondly on the nine years that I spent here. I also want to thank the community. They accepted me nine years ago, a little bit of a younger man back then. And they accepted me and brought me in, and, and that was really refreshing. It made me realize what Texas hospitality was all about. They remind me often, many of them, that they did that even though I was from California. But at the same time, I always felt like I was supported, and, and I couldn't have asked for a better community to work here with. So I'm very blessed to have that. Deeply honored to have the opportunity to work, you know, for a city and a community. And also, my nine years of working with the council has also been very rewarding. City management here, the city management team is, is fantastic. It's, it's strong. I, I can, you know, only say that I hope that where I'm going, it's, is half of that. So I'm looking forward to that. But again, I just wanna say thank you, thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for almost nine years of support. Thank.
Thank you, Chief, for all your hard work. It's kinda funny, I've, I've felt like I've known you for many years, but in this last year since I was, became mayor, and especially during this pandemic, I think I got to know you very well. And we're gonna miss you a great deal. And thank you for all you've done in your position for all these years. And we're gonna miss you, and thank you.
All right. So moving on, it's, as many of you know, it's, it's, it's been an interesting year with transitions in and out. And so with some of our transitions out, there are opportunities for transition coming into the organization. And so with that, I want to introduce Jason Alfaro, who's our new Parks and Recreation Director. He's on the second week on, on the job. And rather than reading something to you about him, I'd rather just have him come up and introduce himself, introduce himself, share a little bit about himself, and, and share a little bit about what he will be focusing on.
Nothing like on the spot, right? So, good evening.
I've done it to you before.
Wouldn't expect anything less, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Jason Alfaro. Excited to be here in Victoria. I was actually born in Victoria, spent about 15, 18 years of my life here, and left and been in the Parks and Recreation Departments for the past 17 years. So I'm excited to be back in my hometown, to be able to help the quality of life, continue to enhance it, continue to grow it here for the City of Victoria. So I'm super excited to be able to have this opportunity and to be able to work with the staff and y'all as well. So anything that I can do to help the Parks and Recreation System, if there's anything that you need from me, or is any kind of, you know, questions or comments, please, please let me know. I'm here for you.
Great.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Come back home.
Thank you.
Hopefully there aren't any skeletons in the closet there from his time growing up here, right? In any case, Mayor, those, those are all the announcements I have for tonight.
Okay. Well, we'll move on into public and employee recognitions. You have some?
April will be discussing some of these for us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First plaque that I would like to present is to former Mayor Will Armstrong for his service on the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation Board of Directors. Mr. Armstrong served on the board from 2004 to 2013 while he was Mayor of the city, and then was reappointed to the board in 2018, and he served until December 2019. The city appreciates your willingness to serve your community, sir, and presents you with this plaque in appreciation of your time and service.
Thank you.
I don't think I've enjoyed anything anymore than serving on the city boards and serving up there where you are, Riley, and, and where you councilman were. It's, it's a shame that every citizen can't serve on a city board for a little while. But I hope when you're looking at their own appointments, you'll find another spot for me someplace. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
I had another citizen that was gonna be here, Kathleen Barrera. I'm not sure if she's here or in the other overflow seating, so.
Would it be appropriate to get a picture, maybe, with the mayors?
Sure.
Or members of council that wanna be in a picture with Mayor Armstrong? He'd like to be in a picture with y'all.
How many mayors do you want in the picture?
Yeah, that's right, right? Yeah. Yeah, how many mayors do we have to pick from, right? Yeah.
I served on sales tax with him, so I'm gonna.
Yeah, absolutely. And we can, yeah, we can take pictures on our phones. I mean, nowadays, it's good quality, unless we had somebody coming on, coming. Who?
Ms. Barrera.
Yeah. I'll take them, I'll take them on my phone. Don't breathe.
That, Jan.
All right, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek went to check to see if she was over there.
Okay.
It's pretty full over there.
Nope, no, I think we're good. I think we can move on to yours, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, it's unusual. I've, I've felt like after going through this, this pandemic exercise and spending about two and a half months in a basement almost every day with folks, you get to witness a lot of things. And it's unusual that the city is gonna honor a county employee tonight. And I want to speak about Brittany Burgess a bit. Brittany has worked as the County, Victoria County Public Health Department Epidemiologist since March 2018. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Ms. Burgess has dedicated her time to keeping Victoria as safe as possible. She led investigations and contact tracing for positive COVID-19 cases, provided infection control assistance to healthcare facilities, and was a subject matter expert for city and county response and operations, which was extremely important, along with the input of Dr. McNeil and David Gonzalez to the decisions that we had to make. She has spent countless hours using her skills, dedication, and leadership to protect public health in Victoria County. Thank you, Ms. Burgess, for the job well done, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And I, and one of the things that was important to me, Brittany was one of those that worked so hard behind the scenes. She wasn't, she didn't get the spotlight in the, in the press conferences and all of that, but I tell you, she worked hard and was taking calls in the wee hours of the morning. So I want to thank you, Brittany, for everything you did for us.
David, if you wanna step up to.
I can snap a picture of all three of you.
Sure, I'll say a few words. She was definitely offered the spotlight on many occasions to take my spot during press conferences, but she politely declined, and I was happy to do so and let her do her work and utilize her skills behind the scenes. Definitely gonna be tough to replace, for sure. So I've tasked her with that, that duty before she leaves, to do what she can to try to find somebody to replace her. So we appreciate definitely her, the work that she, the time she's been here, definitely during the pandemic. I think she was able to display her skill set and her knowledge base there to really do a lot of good for her. So we'll definitely miss her, and she'll be tough to replace. So we do thank her for her service, though.
Thank you so much. Now we'll move on to items from council. Are there any items from council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to citizens' communication. I have two cards tonight, one from Michael Von der Rama. Is I pronouncing that correctly?
No, but that's good enough.
Okay. Von der Rohe, okay. Okay, AU, got it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Von der Rohe from East North Mobile Home Park. We have a lot of people live there that abuse their dogs. And one of the people that lives there, they have two Siberian Huskies, and they live in dog feces, and they live in filth, and they have like a three-foot area by three foot. And they were trapped on step ladders and furniture, and they couldn't walk or move. And I would like to thank the city manager for contacting David Gonzalez and Commissioner Garcia for getting the animal control chief, Chief Jose Flores, he's a newcomer, and Scott Buchanan, he is a supervisor there, along with a police officer, sergeant, I'll just use his initials, T R K, that helped. And they got the dogs, and they couldn't get to them because they were trapped under step ladders and furniture, and they, they made the lady take all that furniture off them. And I just want to thank everyone. And two of the litters have died of parvo because they have dog feces throughout the house and the patio, and the litters of puppies keep on dying for parvo. So I hope the vet can check on those Siberian Huskies and make sure they don't have parvo. And I do hope someone can adopt those Siberian Huskies, and I do hope that they can forward this to the detectives and maybe to the district attorney and look into some kind of criminal charges or some kind of civil sanctions or some ruling where they can't have pets or at least a ticket or something, because this has been going on for a couple of years. And, you know, I've been coming to city council meetings and commissioner court meetings talking about that. I'm, I'm glad that someone took action, you know, and it took about an hour for them to get the dogs. They were lodged in a bunch of furniture, and they didn't have no food or anything to do then. They've done the same thing to Chihuahuas. They put in cages and wouldn't give them no food and water, and the police had to come and, you know, take care of them. And I'm not gonna tell the trailer number to publicly embarrass them, but the key people, you know, in the city of Victoria, they know who they are. And I appreciate the effort by the police department and animal control in saving the dogs. And they took, it's heavily documented, they can't really get out of it, because the police officer and animal control, they took pictures of the dogs and the place, so they can't really say, oh, everything's fine. But this been, last Friday between two and three, and the place is still the same. You know, they live like pigs, and, you know, they're not gonna change, and that's their right, but they shouldn't abuse their dogs like that. But I appreciate everything everyone's done regarding the COVID virus 19. And there's too many names to remember to thank, but you, you too, I watched all your meetings, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm glad to hear that the matters are being resolved. Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Lopez.
Mayor of the city council. My name is Desi Ben Lopez, and I still reside at 2002 and a half, West Bend, Jordan Street, in between Port Lavaca Highway and Bloomington Highway. Got another 300 pounds of metal, trash debris. But, you know, sometimes when I'm doing what I do, people misconstrue me. A lady was following me with her phone while she's driving going, and she called the police on me. And I'm picking up, you know, McDonald's, and I'm picking up all my stuff. Another man on the grand highway pulled out his gun. What are you doing? And I'm just, you know, I'm doing me. But after I spoke last time, Mr. McCoy, I didn't hear your words. I had to watch it on YouTube. I was crying when I left here. I didn't prepare my speech this time, I just came in. This Corona really, it wasn't like Harvey, it wasn't a wall banker. But it, I put lime in my drinks now, and I do my alcohol. And now I've, I've switched from Our Lady of Lourdes, you know, I'm at eight o'clock mass, and things have kinda changed in my world. Coming clean that you're mentally ill, people do kinda stand aside. I have social distancing without really asking for it. But I peacefully go about my day. I start sometimes at three in the morning, sometimes I don't stop till two in the morning. But with Mr. Craig's help, and I've known the man since USC, 1994, yes, California and Texas sometimes don't get along. You guys are a superpower, and we're a superpower. But we joined forces, you know, silently, and we took care of each other. And I'm gonna miss him, a little more than you guys. Nine years is great, but I've known the man for over 20. And when 1992 riots hit, I was in Spain. I came back to LA, and then I saw the Coliseum filled with National Guard and guns everywhere, and I was scared for my family. Right now, my fear's been lifted because I came clean. I go to Christ Kitchen now, but I don't mess with the park people. Queen City Park, it has a bad reputation. Riverside Park has a beautiful reputation. But a lot of the city forgets about Green Mile Park, Meadowlands Park, and Martin Luther King Park, and I visit all 14 parks. Sometimes on the bus, sometimes walking, because I found out there's 386 miles in the city, and I probably walked 200. I've been up and down streets because I used to work for UPS, so I, you know, I, I like learning my streets, Nimitz, Hummel, and I tell people street things, and they've been here, like, you know, our new park director, I could tell him streets, and he may go, where's that? And I've only been here for 22 years. I came when Katrina hit. I didn't like it because it was country. I went to San Antonio. We started the graffiti abatement program, me and Lisa McKenzie. We did a lot of good work in San Antonio. You know, you guys still think there's no graffiti problem, but I know there is. Going down the Barrow, you see rolling twenties, you see UG, and, you know, I confront these people. And they, who are you? I go, I'm a public servant of this city. And a lot of people don't understand, but I still pray in the morning for this police, you know, I still pray when I pass the fire department, because my godson Dylan is a firefighter. He was here with Victoria, but he missed the big city, so he went to Houston. I am so grateful I'm in Victoria because I'm not dealing with all those riots right now. I'm peacefully able to go to Little Joe's now. I'm able to go to Poggin, they've invited me at events. You guys don't realize, being a steward of the city is harder than being a politician in the city. You guys get a lot of rewards and benefits, cold water, I get warm water. But you know what? I'm grateful. I'm grateful for every day that I'm here in this city. I'm able to sit in my backyard with Montequie, and she adopted a little puppy at a Dory because it was abandoned, a little Chihuahua, and we call him Chewy. They call him Chubacabra because he had over a thousand fleas. Three-hour bath it took to get all those things off of that dog, but now he loves me like Montequie. I haven't let him off the property because, like I said, those truckers don't have no respect for nobody. But I'm sorry if police resources have to be called because people are afraid of me and they don't understand me. But I do do work for Josephine, and she doesn't ask me. I do work for Mr. Garza, and he doesn't ask me. No one really has to ask me to do anything, and I don't ask for nothing in return. I still smoke my cigarettes, I still smoke my cigarrillos. But, you know, I live off $10 a day. I gotta realize that those $10 are gonna go to my church, my friends, my police chief. But I make it. I make it because I believe I'm, I'm a child of God, like all of us. And my father over, you know, at St. Mary's, he's not understanding because he's new. But we'll get to know each other. He goes, did you really go to the Vatican? Did you really work for him, Monsieur? I go, yeah, I think so, there's pictures to prove it. I don't remember it. But I love it being here in Victoria, and I'm here to just thank you, Mr. McCoy, because even my mom heard those words, that I'm welcome here for 45 more years. I really don't wanna die, but yet, every day I wake up, I'm mad. I'm mad, and I gotta ask God, why am I mad? You shouldn't be mad, Desi. You're gonna be 50 years old. The first 25 were wonderful, I was a USC graduate. The next 25, I was Jerry Lewis's poster child. Now I just wanna be a, like that man, come to the meetings, be a community man. I pass by Lulu's every day, community. Turn off your TV, plant a garden, talk to your neighbors, and but the Remake, we can't even talk to nobody, unless we're a young gun and we got a mask over our head. I'm not scared no more, and I thank you, Mr. McCoy. Your words motivated me to just continue to do me.
Well, Mr. Lopez, I appreciate that very much, and know that people in Victoria do care. And, and we appreciate you, that you have found a place that you're comfortable to live. And so thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, guys, I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anyone else has citizens' communication tonight? We do have some items for public hearing coming up, and you can reserve comments for those times as well. Mr. Gush, will you take us to those items?
Sure.
Mayor, if, if there's no objection, I'd like to go back to the public recognition piece.
Oh, okay.
Our second individual, Ms. Barrera.
Oh, good.
She's here, and so we wanna make sure we.
Good, good.
We get to that.
Hello again. So this time, I would like to present a plaque to Kathleen Barrera for her service on the Victoria Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Ms. Barrera began serving on the board in 2016 and served for four years. The city council and the city do appreciate your service and willingness to serve your community, and we present you with this plaque in honor of your time and service. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council, and it was an honor to serve on the Victoria Housing Authority. We left it in very good hands. We did many projects, and our most wonderful project was the one that was funded by the Caterpillar and the North Street Project. And I think y'all all saw it while the times that y'all were here, and it's been completed. So we're moving forward, and thank y'all very much, and it was an honor to serve all of you and the city of Victoria. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Mayor, can I get a?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. G.
What was yours, Mr. Gush?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that takes us to item C1 on the agenda, which is a approval of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG 2019 Annual Action Plan Substantial Amendment for CARES Act Funding and CDBG 2020 Annual Action Plan Proposed Budget and Funding Recommendations.
Oh, good, do you have a?
Yes, I have a short presentation. So this is both a 2019 Annual Action Plan Amendment, as well as our funding recommendations for the 2020 Annual Action Plan. So first, going through the 2019 amendment, we have the Mortgage Assistance Program that we're closing out in 2019 and reprogram them, reprogramming that money to demolition, as well as closing out that program in plan years 17 and 18, and reprogramming those funds for an increase of $20,000 to our demo program. And that's just a regular entitlement funding amendment. And this all matches what was presented at the last meeting in the five-year plan. The next substantial amendment for 2019 is related to our CARES Act funding. So we are programming $246,500, and that is for the following public service programs. We have two scholarship or summer programs for children of essential workers, one for the Boys and Girls Club, the other to YMCA, both at $10,000 for the, each of the entities. The Community Action Committee, and we are proposing to increase their budget by $10,000 for water utility assistance, and that name is actually a little misleading. We have expanded the program to include both the sewer and trash portions of the utility bill, and also increase the maximum amount that's allowed to help for each individual. We are also proposing a new program with Community Action Committee for gas, electricity, and propane assistance for $10,000. We are recommending funding Perpetual Help Home 6500 for an educational program, and then increasing Meals on Wheels by $15,000 for those individuals that are homebound due to COVID-19. With this CARES Act money, we also have two proposed public facility projects, which is a deep cleaning of the Boys and Girls Club facility for $10,000, and then expansion of the food bank for $175,000 to help move them into their new facility because of their increased need for, with COVID-19. This does leave us with $109,157 in CARES Act money to be programmed as we see future needs. Last meeting, I had an error and had reported that as $99,000 because I had accidentally double-counted a $10,000 program, so we will have $109,000 in CARES Act funding. So we will have a hundred and nine thousand dollars in CARES Act funding. And so that closes out our 2019 plans. Our 2020 recommendation, this is for our entitlement funding, is we received six hundred and four thousand, five hundred and eighty-five. We are proposing twenty percent of that to administration. Then fifty thousand for a roof rehabilitation program for affordable housing. A hundred thousand for demolition and the neighborhood programs category. Sixty-eight thousand for street lighting under public infrastructure. Seventy-five thousand for solar lights in three parks, MLK, Pine Street, and Queen City Parks. And that will be a total of six lights throughout those three parks. And we're developing where those actually should be in the public improvements category. And then public facilities at a hundred thousand and public services at ninety thousand, which of course is always capped at that fifteen percent. And so that totals out what we received for our entitlement. This is the streetlight project area. We are currently working with engineering services and AEP to get exact locations, but we have a budget of sixty-eight thousand for this boundary area. Our 2020 public facility recommendation is to grant a hundred thousand to Perpetual Help Home. They are requesting funds to rehab a building they own at Wandland and Navarro Street to turn it into a classroom, which it will then free up classroom space they're currently using in their, their actual home for more residence space. We are not recommending funding the food bank out of our 2020 entitlement funds because we are recommending funding them a hundred and seventy-five thousand out of their two hundred and fifty thousand dollar request of the CARES Act funds. For our 2020 Public Service Agency recommendations, again, Boys and Girls Club at ten thousand, utilities assistance at fourteen thousand, Meals on Wheels with Community Action Agency at fourteen thousand, the kids backpack program with the food bank at twelve thousand, CASA volunteer training at eight thousand, Gulf Bend Wellness Community Case Worker Program for ten thousand, Meals on Wheels with the Senior Center, fourteen thousand, and then YMCA childcare at eight thousand, which helps, will help approximately four hundred and twenty-seven individuals, and then funds ninety thousand. We are not recommending the, a public service agency request to Opportunity Knox because we are recommending funding their public facility instead. We received a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars in public service agency funding requests and are only able to fund ninety thousand. So currently, tonight, we are asking approval of the 2019 amendments and then these 2020 input on the 2020 recommendations. We will take the, any input we receive or move forward with these recommendations to develop our 2020 Annual Action Plan, which will also be included in our 2024 Consolidated Plan. It will be a combined plan for this next year, and that will come back to council for approval in August. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Julie, the a hundred and nine thousand that's gonna be left over from CARES, is that gonna be reprogrammed? Are y'all gonna try and use it in this budget year?
Um, so it'll stay, we'll still keep it in the 2019 plan, but we'll have to bring those amendments back to council to however we want to allocate that remaining funds.
We don't have a specific line item that we have to use them on? You can just go ahead and add to the other ones?
Luckily, with the CARES Act, we don't have any kind of caps on public service agencies, so we can, again, grant those for different programs or we can use the money for facilities or anything that really responds to COVID-19.
Any further questions for Ms. Holger? Thank you very much. I'll now open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone who wants to step forward and speak to this matter, please do so now.
Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
I think we have, um, I'm sorry, there was several representatives from these service agencies in our overflow space.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know if any of them
Yes, so we did have Tim Hornback arrive, Lynette with CASA, Lynette Cunningham with Boys and Girls Club, Dan Williams Capone with Senior Center, and Vicky Smith with Community Action. But I'm not, I don't believe that they actually wish to speak during this portion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
They just came to here.
Because they're
Quick question for you. Mr. Gush, can I reopen public hearings when I've acted too quickly? Thank you.
I move to accept item C1.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second to accept item C1. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Same sign.
Item C2 is the annexation of zero point one nine three acres of land owned by DGMP Incorporated.
Any presentation on this?
No. Okay.
Okay. That's fine. I will now open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone here to speak to it, please step forward now. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second to accept item C2. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Item three, C3, is the annexation of ten acres of land owned by Texan Properties LLC.
Any presentation? Seeing none, I will open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone who wants to speak to it, please step forward now. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Approve item C3.
Second.
Two, a motion and a second to approve item C3. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mr. Mayor, that takes us to the consent agenda, and there are six items on the consent agenda tonight that'll be approved by a single vote. They are, first, the adoption of minutes of the special council meeting held on May 12, 2020, and the minutes of the regular council meeting held on May 19, 2020. Second, awarding of a contract for the replacement of chillers at City Hall, the Victoria Police Department, and municipal court to Schrader Refrigeration Company Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Third is the approval of the final renewal of the debris monitoring contract with Tetra Tech. Fourth is the award of a contract for post-disaster debris removal services to Ashford Incorporated. Fifth is the approval of the purchase of consoles and workstations from Zibick Systems Incorporated in the amount of seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Sixth is the designation of the city manager as the authorized official to approve the fiscal year 2021 for the Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority Grant Program.
I move to adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt consent agenda. Any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Item E1 is to reappoint members to the Victoria County Public Health Department Board of Health.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I will present information to you about the Board of Health appointments. And Victoria County Public Health Department Director David Gonzalez is also in attendance if you have any questions that I'm unable to answer, so. The purpose of the Victoria County Public Health Department Board of Directors is to advise the director on the overall operation of the Health Department on matters of public health and on policies of the department. There are nine members. Three must legally be qualified, licensed, and practicing physicians in Victoria County. One must be a legally qualified, licensed, and practicing dentist in Victoria County. One must be a registered nurse. And the city council appoints five members of that nine-member board, and the county commissioners appoint the other four positions. Members of the board may serve, may not serve more than two consecutive three-year terms. And vacancies for unexpired terms are filled by the appointment of the body that originally appointed those members since the county commissioners and the, and the city council both appoint it has to be who originally appointed that position. Now, I have a note there that that was changed by, in 2016, to two successive three-year terms by the 2016 inter-local agreements, the agreement that has all of the provisions for the Fire Department, Library, and Health Department.
Here's those elves who we want to be reappointed?
I'm sorry?
Those elves will want to be reappointed, is that what I
Yes, sir, they do. So currently, the city appoints, uh, the city board members and the city appointed Ms. Darla Strather and Dr. Daniel Kano, who are both up for reappointment and do desire to be reappointed. And we also appointed Malcolm, uh, Dr. Malcolm Semberra and Sidney Ontier? I'm not sure if I say that correct. Ontier. And Javier Vasquez, uh, Dr. Javier Vasquez Ortiz. And the county has appointed Dr. Zeppelin, Heather Glaze, she's an RN, Henry Holloman, and Erica Briggs. They do the, the two appointees, the applications you have in paper form as well as they were in your packet and emailed to you. But both Dr. Kano and Ms. Strather do desire to be reappointed. Now, the city does appoint normally the three doctors on that board and the dentist. That's kind of historically how we've done that. So if we don't reappoint Dr. Kano, we would have to appoint another doctor to fulfill that board, so.
I move to reappoint Dr. Kano and Ms. Strather to the County Public Health Department Board of Health.
Second. A motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Item E2 is to apply for a reimbursable grant program for up to three point, three million, seven hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars from the coronavirus relief fund through the Texas Department of Emergency Management.
All right. We've talked on several occasions about the CARES Act, right? And we all know that the CARES Act was something that was voted on by Congress to help communities deal with COVID-19 in our response. What's been a little bit slow in that process is just the rollout of all the different programs that were included in that original CARES Act and the implementation and the information that has flowed out. One of the recent programs that we've been made aware of that now there is literature on to help us better understand is this grant program that I'm about to go through. Part of this relief fund to Texas was a little over eleven billion dollars. And for the communities that were higher than five hundred thousand dollar in population, they were able to get a direct allocation. For communities that were smaller than five hundred thousand, we have to go through this process through TIDM to be able to, in essence, apply for the drawdown of these funds. Specifically, twenty percent of what we would qualify for would be immediately available for us to draw down. But this is all reimbursed base, and so these are all funds that we need to incur first and then show proof and submit for, for this drawdown. You'll see in this slide that we calculate on the per capita basis, which is the formula that they utilize to calculate this, that we can potentially qualify for up to three point seven million dollars. And that's why the action item is worded as such. Now, that, of course, doesn't mean that we'll actually be able to draw down the entire three point seven million because, again, it's based off of expenses incurred in different programs that, that we might implement from now until the end of the calendar year, which is the deadline for when you must have had incurred these expenditures. I have several slides kind of detailing some of the eligibility elements or criteria, I should say, because I want to give you a sense of the types of programs that either A, we're already doing, or B, that we might consider doing because we obviously want to try and leverage and take advantage of this grant opportunity as best as possible. And so there's an opportunity for us to maybe go a little bit further with some of the things that we've already done. This is the opportunity to do that. And within that three point seven, there are some parameters percentage-wise that I'll run through here in a second. And so eligible expenditures for the pandemic, right? Medical expenses, public health expenses. These elements, of course, are no surprise, right? During a pandemic, we recognize that there will be a high level of expenditures associated with medical or public health. We also know that from a staffing standpoint, there's gonna be a significant increase in staffing, whether it's through overtime or some of these other elements. And so because of those things, the grant program actually requires that seventy-five percent of that total amount must be spent on those three categories alone. And the remaining twenty-five percent can be spent on all the other categories that I'll briefly run through. As an example, some of the other elements that are eligible are associated with economic support, and I have another slide that'll kind of break that down a little bit. Any expense necessary for the function of government. And of course, for us was, you know, our, our intent to want to continue to offer services, you know, things that we've gone through as we've, as we've reopened. Next slide's offer more specifics, though. So medical expenses, right? What does that mean? These are costs related to public hospitals, clinics, similar facilities, or maybe temporary facilities. You know, thankfully, here in our community, the pandemic and the number of cases didn't get to the point where we had to mobilize these types of elements. But if we did, those, those costs would be reimbursable. COVID-19 testing, that would be reimbursable. You know, many communities have been, across the state, have taken it upon themselves to initiate these sort of centralized testing sites, and so all of those expenditures would be reimbursable under the program. Transportation costs associated with it, telemedicine capabilities associated with it. Some communities have, have put together these programs that are kind of more comprehensive than what we did. And so some of these elements, we don't have. You know, as an example, the public telek, the public telemedicine capabilities, you know, we had a phone bank, as an example. But it really wasn't a telemedicine function, right? We didn't have doctors, you know, or nurse practitioners manning those phone lines to be able to actually provide medical advice. And so that probably wouldn't necessarily be the telemedicine or reach that telemedicine level like in some other communities might have. Now, it would have been nice, right? As we go through these, right, we'll realize that it would have been nice if we would have known, you know, four months ago that a lot of these things would be reimbursable because maybe at that time, we would have maybe gone a little further with what we did. But of course, this is something that we've just become to, has become, made aware to us in the last couple of weeks. Public health expenses, these are elements associated with the communication and enforcement of public health orders. We know we had a little bit of that. Acquisition and distribution of medical and protective supplies. Obviously, that PPE was, was a big item of importance for us, and I won't go through, through each bullet point. But you get the picture as to the different items that fall under public health. Payroll expenditures, this is one of those items that we're looking heavily at, especially since we, we would be required to collectively with this and the previous two items, be representative of seventy-five percent of that amount. This is what, where we're gonna try and get reimbursed for some of the overtime pay that, that we incurred. We didn't initially initiate a hazard pay program, but this program allows us to go back and explore the feasibility of doing a retroactive hazard pay program, and so we're exploring those feasibilities. Once you get down into the weeds of, of the, of the criteria, what qualifies for hazard pay is very specific to some of the personnel that were actually in the trenches of dealing with this. It's not something that we would realistically be able to do across the board to all city employees, but we are exploring that specific element as, as something that we might be able to go back and retroactively establish.
On that, that last one, you did have some employees that were reassigned, so that last one might qualify also. Didn't you have some
Correct.
employees that got into some of
We
COVID-related functions?
Right, that's something that we're still exploring the feasibility of. For instance, employees that worked our EOC operation clearly played an intricate role in our response to COVID-19, ranging from communication staff to IT staff to even, quite frankly, staff from different departments that simply participated as part of the call center. I mean, we had employees from, from library, from parks, from CBB that all participated in, in, in the phone back, in staffing of the phone bank. So we're still exploring the feasibility of, of those elements. And like any other program, as more communities start submitting questions to TIDM, asking for clarification or expansion to some of this information, we'll start getting more information to help us discern what qualifies and what not. The benefit is that we have until the end of the calendar year to, to figure it out. And so we've got a little bit of time to look into some of these elements. But it's important that y'all get a sense of what they are so that once we do submit for them or we make you aware of what we're doing, you understand why. One of the elements of this grant program allows us to partner with other government agencies in the delivery of certain services. And so this specific line item, as an example, talks about reimbursable expenses associated with food delivery to residents, distance learning in connection with school closings, expenditures to improve telework capabilities for public employees. You know, some of those elements, we incurred, right? And so we, for instance, had to potentially buy laptops and other elements to help our employees telecommute, and so we're looking at exploring that. Expenses of providing paid sick and paid family medical leave, care for homeless populations provided to mitigate COVID-19 effects. These are all elements that we'll take a deep dive and explore and see what the feasibility is of us partnering with some other entities where we might be able to get dollars reimbursed and hopefully make some of our community partners whole. Because obviously, every Because obviously, every entity took a hit with the increase in expenditures to try and address this. And so this is one of those items that, realistically speaking, will take some time to vet out because it will necessitate a high level of collaboration and communication with partners to really discern and figure out, you know, what were your expenditures? What was associated with COVID-19? And so definitely will necessitate some man-hours to this specific category, if you will. Economic support. This one makes me chuckle a little bit because the program allows for the reimbursement of the provision of grants to small businesses to reimburse costs of business interruptions caused by required closures, local government payroll support program, unemployment insurance, assistance to individuals for payment of utility bills. I want to clarify a couple of these points. If you're wondering, what does that first bullet mean to what we did? We're looking to get some further clarification on that. There has been, the initial language that was distributed in terms of criteria only utilized the word grant. And so we could tell through the additional information that TIDAM was putting out that other communities were also submitting questions surrounding loan programs. And so at this point, it does appear that a loan program would qualify to be able to be reimbursed. But we're still exploring the actual process that that would take. And more than likely, we'll be coming forward and making a recommendation on pros and cons of whether we actually want to go down the path of the program that we partnered with People Fund going through this program or not. Some of those specifics are still being vetted out. As an example, this loan, I mean, I'm sorry, this program reimburses you for expenses incurred through the end of the calendar year. And so what does that mean for our program when maybe not all of the funds will be granted in a loan by the end of the calendar year? Maybe yes, maybe no. What does that look like? And so there's little nuances that we need to kind of figure out to truly discern and determine if that's a path we're going to go down. The last bullet point I want to clarify is different from what you've heard Julie talk about. All of these funds are intended to reimburse us for expenditures for programs that we did not already have in place. Things that were specifically came because of COVID-19. And so many of the programs that exist in our community are ongoing programs, the ones that we support through CDBG. This specific would be a completely different program. It would be a program that maybe we ourselves take on, since we do have a utility operation, where maybe we specifically say that we're going to offer an assistance program for our utility customers specifically because of COVID-19. Or maybe there is a third-party organization that takes it on. But it has to be very specific to COVID-19 and not associated with existing programs that exist out there already. Next steps, we're already naturally trying to take advantage of getting that first drawdown of the 20% that we mentioned in one of the earlier slides. And as I mentioned before, we have until the end of the calendar year to be able to submit some of these programs. As you can tell, there's a lot of work that potentially will go into this effort, not only internally, but also externally, especially as we explore opportunities to partner with our nonprofits or other government entities and some of the services that were included in one of the slides. One of the things that we've already have captured is just the level of grants and grant programs that are beginning to, or have come out related to COVID. And this is just a slide showing some of the ones that we already are aware of. Obviously, the one that's before you today. At the last council meeting, the police chief came and got approval for some of the ones associated with him. We know that there is a program out there for the library that Derek and Dana are working on to enhance technology offerings at the library. That's the last one at the bottom. Excuse me. One of the big ones that we've also learned quite a bit about in the last couple of weeks is the EDA. And I'll spend a minute talking about that one. For those that are not familiar, the Economic Development Administration traditionally has a public works grant program. And that's actually the program that our community received a grant back 20 years ago when we built out our industrial park. Since then, our community has not submitted a project for the EDA, even though every year, there's an opportunity to apply for an economic development-related grant with them. We know that there are plenty of grant opportunities out there that we're missing out on, just in a normal situation, right? Normal, non-pandemic, non-disaster. We know that there are opportunities out there that we're missing out on by not applying every year. And EDA is another example of that. However, our EDA region, which is based out of Austin, which is a five-state region, on an annual basis typically gets between $35 to $40 million a year to award. What they receive through the CARES Act was roughly $250 million. And so they have a substantial amount of money available out of our region, which is out of Austin, for an economic development project that is associated with COVID that might make our community more resilient. And recently, I was having a conversation with Councilwoman Scott just about, you know, different terms that have been flowing. And resiliency is one of the ones that's more current, if you will. And so during this pandemic, now even the EDA is utilizing the term and to try and limit the projects that communities apply for. How can you become more resilient? How can your community deal, from an economic development standpoint, survive some type of disaster? That's a big program that we know we have the ability to submit many projects for. Mike and I had the opportunity to meet with Robert Pichet, who's our point of contact with the EDA, whom we both know from our time in San Antonio and I know from my time in Kingsville as we went through a grant program there. And so we're establishing that relationship, but that'll necessitate a lot of work to be able to go through that program, as well as some of these others that might have programs that we don't even know of. And this is all just related to COVID-19. Some other additional grant opportunities, just really briefly, that I feel that we could do a better job of leveraging. And some of these, you may or may not be aware of. Recently, literally as soon as last week, there was a new mitigation program that came out through the GLO, the General Land Office, related to Harvey. And so there is now yet another major grant program for mitigation associated with Harvey that we're beginning to look into. We literally just got those details last week. Obviously, you're familiar. We've worked with Grant Works in the past on some of our existing projects. And so we're in the process of evaluating how we want to handle this new program. Recently, Danielle talked about the fact that we're going to be submitting an application for a grant with Texas Parks and Wildlife for the duck pond in the fall. Texas Parks and Wildlife typically has three or four different grant programs with different deadlines throughout a calendar year. And quite frankly, in my opinion, there's no reason why we shouldn't be applying for every single one of those every year. Texas Department of Transportation, this is another area of opportunity that I feel we haven't leveraged enough. TexasDOT has set aside grant programs or safe routes to school programs where communities can apply for sidewalks that lead to school. Typically, those programs are for a mile radius of two miles around a school. And so you're able to apply for sidewalk projects then. The set aside program also assists with trails or anything that is transportation or pedestrian in nature. I don't think our community has ever applied for a program through TexasDOT, out of that program. Texas Historical Commission, there are a lot of grant opportunities there, specifically, obviously, from a historic preservation standpoint. And especially now that we're undertaking Main Street, there's opportunities there for us to leverage some of those grants from THC. We recently, you may or may not be aware, that our county recently became what's called a certified local government or COG. This was an effort that was spearheaded by our county Historic Preservation Officer. And what that allows us the ability to do is to leverage even more grants through the COG program to be able to focus more on historic preservation. You know, things like our historic inventory. You know, when was the last time our community put together an inventory of our historical assets? You know, in my conversation with Jeff Wright, you know, it's been a while. And so he's spearheading that effort. But there are grant opportunities we're missing there. Texas Department of Agriculture, some of those are associated with CDBG. There might be some opportunities there. Texas Water Development Board has grant programs associated with infrastructure projects. TCQ, Darryl, they've got some beautification program that they apply for there, but there are others. Private foundations, there's many private foundations out there that communities can apply for grants. You know, one of the ones that just came across my desk not too long ago was Union Pacific. Union Pacific has a grant program that they put out to communities where Union Pacific has a presence. And they typically focus on downtown type of projects. My point with this slide is that there are a lot of grant opportunities that we're not leveraging to the full extent that I feel that we should. And add all of the COVID grant opportunities. It's just a lot going on. And so I know that I recently met with all of you during our monthly one-on-ones where I provided some highlights on what the upcoming budget might look like. If you would have read the footprint of our meeting, you know, it would have said I reserve the right to change my mind. And one of those elements that, quite frankly, I feel we need to consider sooner rather than later is adding a grant administration role to our organization to help us stay on top of a lot of these programs that we haven't leveraged. We're still working to kind of vet that out on what exactly that looks like. But do not be surprised if that is something that we move forward with sooner rather than later. Because even if we were to do it as part of the budget, by the time October 1st comes around and we actually get somebody on board, I mean, it's already November, December, and some of these programs are on a timeline. And so we want to make sure that we can be as competitive as we can. And so that's something that we're working on. And I'm happy to have follow-up conversations with all of you on what exactly that looks like. Or if you have any major concerns about it, I'm happy to have that conversation with you offline. But to go back to the CARES Act one, since that's technically what the item is about. Just to recap, this is a program for $3.7 million potentially that we can leverage. Again, it's dependent on the expenditures and the programs. We are looking to be super creative with what we're doing because we want to leverage these funds. And so as we do that, we will obviously keep you updated. Internally, we've established so far some type of what we think could be a good process, which is simply just trying to disseminate the information to the department heads, challenge them to think of projects that might qualify under one of these categories, and then we'll be able to work with them on that. But with that, I'll conclude my presentation and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, all I can add to it, I know there's a lot of funds out there in the mitigations from both Harvey that are going to go on for a long time and with COVID as well. And I think that we need to be on top of that to supplement the things that we need to do for this community. So I, for one, would like you to, I would like to see you continue and bring us back some of your thoughts on how we could move forward on that. Because that's one position that surely pays for itself with some grants. And there's a lot of money out there through the COG. I don't think we take full advantage of what's available through that, that we're learning more and more about. I've had some conversations with one of the commissioners. And TexasDOT has a lot of grants that are out there that we never take advantage of. They can be used for beautification and stuff. And I think we're shortchanging ourselves if we don't look into these opportunities.
The adopted item, C2, or E2?
Second.
All right. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Item E3 is to approve a professional services agreement with Gary Middleton for representation and consultation services related to municipal water supply at an amount of $24,000.
Before I introduce Gary Middleton, who's here to kind of go over the program what he does. I would steal his thunder, but as you all well know, that's kind of impossible to do. I smiled for everybody. He represents, he's been doing this since 2015, representing the city to secure and maintain the water, our water supplies through many boards. Involved with Edwards Aquifer. He's in, of course, they're a huge group that, and I'll let him explain some of that, that it's very interesting to know that they are always trying to expand their role of getting water in places such as the very far south of the Gulf Coast. And I'll let him explain how he is on that board, represents the city, represents our local businesses, our industries around here. And what this contract does, it gives him another year to, again, represent the city at the state level, at our local board level, at Edwards Aquifer level, Guadalupe Basin level. And we want to, as part of that agreement, we will go back to, he's been, the COVID kind of messed up our timeline. And this is a retroactive resolution to begin the yearly contract in April. He has been doing services with us, still going to the meetings, still going to the boards, keeping up with, through the internet. And I'll turn it over to Gary.
Just really quickly, I just want to add that the reason, one of the reasons why this is coming before you was when council recently changed the policy that increased my ability to sign off on amounts from $25,000 to $50,000. You may recall that from maybe seven, eight months ago. One of the changes that was included in that was bringing all contracts with former council members or mayors to you. And so that's one of the big reasons why this is coming before you as an action item. Mayor, take it away.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and city council members and staff. Welcome, glad to be here this afternoon. It's been quite a few years, actually, since I've been in this building. Not that I'm mad at you, I just told you to do a good job and don't screw it up if it's not broken. Now, I have represented the city, I started back when I was part of the council as mayor in the mid-'90s. And specifically, at that point in time, it was, I started with Region L, which is a regional water planning group that represents our area of the state of Texas. It's like 22 and a half counties within that region. And I've been on that board since, like I said, since the beginning. I was the alternate for about five months prior to being on the board itself. Mr. James, who worked for the city several times, was on it initially. And then he resigned to go into the public sector, and private sector, rather. And I took over in the first year that they were formed. So, and what that board specifically, it's a bottoms-up planning approach for the water needs of the state of Texas. Our region is combined with the other regions of the state of Texas to come up with the state water plan. And in that, it gives the Water Development Board an idea of the amount of money or the resources that are going to be needed, we're going to need to fulfill the requirements of the need. And along in that, and it's a, we do a report every five years. It'd be impossible to do every year, there's too much data. And that report, if it's printed out for the entire state, I don't know how tall it would be. Our region itself, they go through every type of related industry from power generation to, you know, the ag side of it. The demographers that work for the state, they dictate to us what the population demands are going to be for our regions. They tell us what it's going to be. We don't try, have to do that kind of work ourselves. But the Water Development Boards make sure that we get the correct information in time. We hire a professional engineering company or consulting company that does the background work to compile these reports every year. This one board has like got like 27 or 28 voting members. It's like herding cats, you know, because they start from out in New Valley and run all the way to the Gulf Coast, up and down the Guadalupe, San Marcos, DuBrazo, that entire area. So it's a big board. And, but if your community has a project and it may want to go to the Water Development Board for funding, if your project is not in the current state water plan, you can't even apply for the funding. When I say funding, I don't mean a grant, borrowing the money from the Water Development Board to put in a new water tower or expand, because of an annexation, some utilities or something. So your project has got to be in there. Like our ASR project is about the only project that we may or may not need any money to do. But we want to make sure it's in there in the event it works out well, we want to expand it. If we need to go borrow a little money short-term to do it, Water Development Board might be the easiest place to go get it rather than trying to do, not GOs, but, yeah, revenue bonds. So anyway, that's one of the boards. The other one is the Guadalupe Basin Coalition. It's another organization that we try to meet quarterly in the non-legislative years. And we probably meet every three weeks or at least month. and we probably meet every three weeks, or at least monthly during the legislative years, when the legislature's in session. We start meeting every month, probably in November, December, and then on through the session. We hire our own lobbyist. It's a group of cities, municipalities, Chamber of Commerce's, county government, private industry, water districts, river authorities that run up and down the Guadalupe River. And if you don't have a seat at the table, you don't know what's going on in Austin. And so somebody amongst all of us in the city side or county side, somebody's in Austin all the time. We sometimes, we all have different lobbyists, but we hear of something, we, you got to have somebody in Austin to investigate what this bill's about, who's behind it, who's got support for it. Sometimes we, we work to support a bill, most of the times we work to kill a bill. And it's a very active organization. The current president of that organization is a gentleman named Glenn Lord, that works for Dow Chemical. He, he lives in the Freeport area, but yet, that's, he does us a great job, and it's a good organization that we need to stay participating in. Along with the, those two groups, I serve on behalf of the city on a group called the South Central Texas SCATWAC, South Central Texas Water Advisory Board, or Committee. And, and we are a group that, we do a report every biennium and turn it into the, to the state, to the, to the Water Development Board, TCQ, to the National Resources Committee, chairmans, and anybody else in Austin that wants one, on the effectiveness of the Edwards Aquifer. In other words, their actions, what have they done that can either improve or diminish their management of that aquifer? How does it increase or diminish, or how does it affect the people who live downstream on the New Asus, the San Antonio, and the Guadalupe Rivers? Which is the three base river basins that are located in the Edwards Aquifer region. And from there, I'm elected to serve as a board member of the Edwards Aquifer Authority. SCATWAC elects me to be their, their representative on the Board of Directors of the Edwards. So the Edwards alone is at least 24 meetings a year. You have committee meetings one day a month, and a board meeting the other day a month. In addition to, we always have a two or three-day work session or planning session each year. So that's, and then from that, they manage the Edwards Habitat Conservation Plan, which is, which we worked seven years on to develop a plan that the Federal Fish and Wildlife Service would approve in order to maintain minimum spring flows at Comel and San Marcos Springs, which is the headwaters of the Guadalupe River. Without, in months of, say, August and September, sometimes even July, 70% of the water that passes Victoria Riverside Park comes from those two springs. That's not counting the return flows that come in from Gonzalez and Seguin, you know, 70% of it can be contributed to spring flow. So anything the Edwards does, and everything the Edwards does, is about spring flow. The better they manage the resource that they have, the more water we're going to have in the river in Victoria, Victorian County. Which ultimately affect the bay and estuaries, which also we benefit from tremendously, from a tourism standpoint. So water's tied to everything we do in life, and I just think we need to continue to, whether I'm doing it or someone else is doing it for the city, we need to be a part of the solution and keep working towards knowing what's going on. And things change daily in the water world. New demands arise, and one of these plants down here downstream of us, it probably, the minimum they would even consider building a plant is if they don't have at least 12,000 to 15,000 acre feet of water a year. Well, there's not that much water left in the river. It's been over allocated, not in modern times, going back in history, a long time ago, it got over allocated to where, unfortunately, by rule, we have to, every allocation has to be counted in order to get a new water right, even though you're not using your full allocation, when you do the, do the math up to figure out availability for new water sources. So consequently, there's not any water left in the river. The 20,000 acre feet that Victoria got, for run-of-the-river rights to be used for potable sources, it's probably going to be the last significant right that's ever issued on the Guadalupe River. You may get a riparian right for somebody can pump a few acres out to water a hayfield or something, but it, but again, that's a water right that is granted to them through another, another part of the law. But there's, there's not any water left, we're not going to make any more. So we've got to stay vigilant and make sure that we're represented, make sure that we're people there. The 24,000, I probably drive around 6,000 miles a year going to these meetings, I make over, over 42 meetings a year, and each one of those meetings is an eight-hour day. So I'm not getting rich doing this, but I appreciate the compensation, and I don't turn in mileage or per diem or anything back to the city. The only thing that might be in addition to this, if, when I go to the TWCA conventions, they have to pay the dues and my registration for those conventions and the hotel bill for that, which is a separate item. And I don't go to every, they have my meetings twice a year, and I only try to go to one every other year. And it's when, when the legislature meets in Austin. So I do a lot of different stuff, hold a lot of different committees, I enjoy doing it. I enjoy representing the city of Victoria in those meetings, and look forward to doing it again if you'll have me.
Thank you very much. The one thing I've learned in conversations we've had is there's a lot of tables around, that decisions are made around about water that affects our lives, and we need to have a seat at every one of those tables.
You're absolutely right. It's hugely important, we have a, I mean, we are, Victoria's been fortunate over the years to have good representation between, some of these I've been doing since the 90s, and some I took over additional work when Jerry James left the city, retired. So there's just a tremendous amount of work that goes on behind the scenes, just like you say, and knowing the value, there's just a lot of things that have happened in the last few years and some changes that could have cost the city another half a million dollars a year to pay back some of the fees associated with not getting that HCP for the Habitat Conservation Plan, that, because if you had a perm, you're going to pay your fair share of what it costs to buy the water rights to make sure that those springs kept flowing. And that's something the city didn't budget for, we can't afford, but that HCP, we found another way to do provisional cutbacks in usage in San Antonio that SARS could live with, and the people of San Antonio could live with. But what supports and backs it up is an ASR project that they started, a demonstration project for 20,000 acre feet, and now that ASR has got over 120,000 acre feet of water in it. And it's, it's, that's what supports and backs it up. Because of that, San Antonio just keeps putting themselves in a better position to have water in the future with every project they complete. We don't need to lose sight of that either if we want to see Victoria grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
I move to approve item E3.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve. Any discussion? If you're not, I'll call to the voters, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Item E4 is to award a contract for the 2020-21 street sweeping project to Sweeping Corporation of America Incorporated in the amount of $251,784.30.
Mayor, council, we did a competitive bidding process on this because we really wanted to get that unit price. So we had, I'm sorry, we had three submissions, and Sweeping Corporation of America was the best value for that. I'll turn it over to Ken.
I'm just going to kind of briefly go over the contract, what it involves, our sweeping process, and then the times a year. There it goes. We sweep the state highways 12 times per year, and you'll see the sweeper, we do that during the daytime. We at first had started doing it at night, however, we feel it is safer for the sweeper and for the public that they can see that sweeper as it's going down the road. The arterials and collectors that are the cities, six times per year, and the local and residential, three times per year. And then we do have critical areas where we may call out that sweeper to do a specific area, or area or neighborhood. This is the map of the state highways, and those attribute about 53 curb miles, and again, those are 12 times per year. The next slide is the arterial collectors for the city, and those represent approximately 96 curb miles per year. And then the largest map and the most miles is, of course, the residential, which is approximately 377 curb miles per year. One point that we'd like to make is we are always looking at opportunities, whether it's by going with a contract or bringing it to do it in-house. And that is something we're going to look at this year, is it, could it be more cost-effective to go back to a in-house sweeping operation? We did that years and years ago, and it just, it overwhelmed our staff, but we want to go back and look at it, do a cost-to-benefit ratio of exactly this contract, which, which the number of times per year, and how we can do it, and how much it costs us to do that same project. But I just wanted to point that out, is something that we're always looking at with the help of the city manager, to continue looking at what's cheaper. But we do recommend approval of this resolution and moving forward to keep, keep our city clean and swept.
And I'll just, I'll just briefly add, too, that one of the elements that I think is, I don't want to use the word missing, but could be more, I guess, at the forefront of the conversation about street sweeping, is the role that street sweeping plays in drainage, in stormwater. You know, we oftentimes associate street sweeping with simply just cleaning up the side of the road, but oftentimes don't think of it in the context of clearing the side of the road to allow water to go where it needs to go. And so part of our holistic view on how we can enhance our drainage maintenance practices, this is a part of that.
And to add on to that, it is part of our MS4 permit, stormwater permit by the EPA, and it's one of the, they call best management practices, just to add on to what Jesus said.
Are the loops included in any of this?
The loop is, yes, the loop is in, I believe that's included, or the state sweeps it, but it's primarily Navarro, Main Street, Fort LeVaca Highway. I believe they sweep the frontage roads.
And we can confirm. So it's not a belief and it's a fact.
Right.
Will we adopt C4 or E4?
Second.
The motion is second on item E4. Any discussion? If you're not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
I believe we don't have any city manager reports tonight, and we'll recess into executive session.
Yes, sir, and we're staying here for that.
Okay, and I believe there will be no action taken, so.
No.
We won't reconvene in public.
So we can shut it down.
Mayor and council, the city council will recess for executive session now on the second day of June 2020 at 6:25 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows, executive session under section 551.072, to deliberate the purchase exchange lease for value of real property interest due to the fact that a deliberation in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city and negotiators of the third party, and also executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code, section 551.087, to discuss or deliberate the offer to a financial or other incentive to a business prospect that the city council seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the city of Victoria, and with which the city of Victoria is conducting economic development negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheers.[1702.41]